At the same time, we need to allow people to transit through the town as quickly as possible. And I think there are other mitigation factors that the town could take and in conjunction with the state in order to be able to increase the safety of both East Main and West Main.
Thank you. Mr. Fiorello?
Safety should be a number one priority for all town council members. And East Main Road, as we all know, and as we've talked to all of our residents, it is a factor. Safety is, East Main Road is very unsafe. The road should be widened if it can. I know there's some private property, but widening the road would be great. Sidewalks is another must for East Main Road if it applies. I have a son that doesn't walk down to Clements, and we have to make him go through backroads to get to Clements. It's very unsafe. Again, going back to the roundabout issue, I think changing the light patterns again at Turnpike and going onto Turnpike and at, I'm sorry, at Columbia Farms, thank you, would help mitigate traffic and would alleviate some of the pressures. I've seen more cars on East Main Road in the past eight years and also more out-of-state cars as well. So there's just a lot more people on that road, and I don't think that road was ever designed to have this much traffic at any point in time.
Yes, Dr. Ryan, please.
East Main Road was designed for two carriage lanes and a trolley in the middle. Each lane is two feet too narrow. We had a chance to widen it back in the 1990s. Unfortunately, Middletown kind of vetoed that because there was an old growth forest that they were interested in protecting, which I believe blew down with Hurricane Bob. But the state is not willing to put the money into burying the holes, widening the road, and then dealing with all the landowners who would be affected on either side. So we need a wider East Main Road, but I'm not sure how we're going to get there.
Yes, Mr. Cohen.
The main thing here is the state is not caring about Portsmouth's safety. And I think we all should remember that. We should remember that it was a do-or-die thing. Either you approved that rotary or else, no paving. It's like a gun to your head. Just remember that. I also think that we've got to garner support from our state representative, state senator, to help us out on this issue because we certainly can't do it on our own because the state is adamant about, I think, not helping us in this situation. And it's desperately needed. Don't take any steps.
Okay, anyone else? East Main Road's safety. All right, we're gonna move to a new topic. Mr. Lebec, we're gonna start with you, and then it comes down to you two for the same question, okay? Yeah, Mr. Lebec, can you talk? Try to talk closer to the microphone. All right, the town of Portsmouth has issued two separate RFPs regarding its future waste management plans. One to keep the transfer station operating the way it is now, and another for curbside pickup throughout town. Do you support one plan over the other, and why?
There are two parts of the same plan. One of the ideas is to keep the transfer station open because there was a lot of remonstration. And there's also a plan to institute curbside pickup with a single wasteful and see whether or not that creates an economy that would attract more people to actually using the curbside pickup instead of the transfer station. So they're not separate things. They're the same thing. The way I view it, and actually, the transfer station is caught up kind of back to the buggies that Doc Ryan was talking about. It was a stopgap measure a long time ago. Right now, I consider curbside pickup to be mass transit for trash, and it saves energy. And that's what we gotta be concerned about. Thank you.
Ms. Blake, same question.
I personally use the transfer station. They've done a great job of keeping it clean and orderly recently. They've always been helpful, and whenever I'm there, I see them working very hard and helping some of our elderly people getting trash out of their vehicles. I support keeping the transfer station open, willing to look at economy of scale for a curbside pickup. But as someone who, my husband is a fisherman, I cannot wait one week with a lot of our meals for trash pickup. We need our trash thrown away the next day.
Mr. Reese.
Okay, I have and will continue to speak out and act to keep the transfer station open. As it presently operates, no changes. People like the convenience and the timing. And you can recycle better up there. Also, for the small users, like the elderly, that don't generate a lot of trash, that's actually the cheapest alternative instead of one blanket cost for everyone. That actually makes it so that if they only use one or two bags a month, that's what they pay. So I'm gonna, we need to ensure that the Crescent Entifice Prize Fund is run efficiently and at the cost of the town for the transfer station a minimum. And we need to ensure that all the maintenance and upgrades are completed and required. And I believe in the curbside pickup. Sure, it may remain voluntary for the.
Okay, anyone else want to talk about trash? Dr. Ryan?
I think this is my last one, too.
No, you have nine total. You have three.
So I agree with what Mr. Lebec has already said. This is vision on two separate things. The town's mission is to try to find the cheapest way to help its citizens get rid of trash. That's it. Neither I nor I don't think anybody else really cares how the trash has gotten rid of, as long as it goes away. So there are two enterprise funds, and people will vote according to what they find convenient and what they find economical. The reason to do a single hauler for the entire town is that how you, that's how you get the best price, and that's the only reason we're doing it.
Yes, Ms. Patrick, please.
As a founding advocate for Save Our Transfer Station, which I wholeheartedly support, we should let the residents who like their service stay as is with that choice. Why change something that is already working? Having options within our town government is crucial. As many are aware, the transfer station operates on an enterprise fund and is self-sustaining. Modifications to the transfer station could be considered if the number of users increase.
Thank you. Okay. Jump in, you're jumping in this place. Go ahead.
First of all, I think, can I just ask this question, Mr. Pickering? You said that there's been two RFPs. Is that what you said? The second, there's been a second RFP for the transfer station submitted?
One for the transfer station, one for the curbside pickup.
The transfer station RFP has not gone out yet. It does not go off until November or December.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Blake.
All right, thank you. Well, you still wanna talk?
I still wanna talk.
So that was all, all that time was just?
I'd go in one direction if that was the case.
Yeah, I told you that I actually wanted to write the.
First of all, I'm just a little concerned. It's not a specific answer to this question, but I am a little concerned with the ordinance that was just passed the other night at the town council.
Sorry, I'm just, the ordinance wasn't passed. The public hearing was passed.
No, I mean, the ordinance was brought up. I'm sorry. I first was there. Thank you so much. The ordinance that was brought up, I guess maybe I think it's gonna be passed, so that's a jump to conclusion. And for the public hearing, this ordinance.
Keep going, keep going, listen.
You can't give me anymore. You're getting the. This ordinance is putting people, it's not a good thing for Portsmouth, I don't think. I understand the rationale maybe, but what it is, is forcing people to do something. It's forcing people to change vendors. It could be forcing people to change vendors, vendors that they've had a relationship with. I understand some of the rationale behind with the various trucks going at different days and different times. But to force someone to take away their right of choice, I feel is not a good thing for Portsmouth.
Mr. Fiorello, and I'll come back down here.
Currently, it is about seventy-six hundred houses in Portsmouth. Twenty-two hundred are using the transfer station. So that means about five, fifty-four hundred are using private service, which is what I use right now. My bill every month is around, every year is about $600. I think we should be thanking the town officials for considering both options for people, saving the transfer station and trying to find alternate ways to save people money, town residents' money with a curbside pickup. I'm in favor of trying to find ways to keep the transfer station open, but also finding cheaper options for private pickup, which is, if over four, four hundred, four thousand houses sign on to this, it will be cheaper than what I'm paying for private service right now.
Yes, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you. So the RFP for the transfer station for the next three years of management, from July first, 2025 through June 30, 2028, will go out in either November or December, and will be voted on by the next council. The RFP for the curbside pickup was voted on on May 13th, and has already been decided that we will be going to a single hauler. I'll take two. So that the majority of residents can hopefully see a cost savings. I have heard anywhere from $400 to $900 that people are paying. My goal would be that we go to curbside enterprise fund, transfer station enterprise fund, and over the course of the next ten to fifteen years, we roll that back into the taxes. So nobody pays out of their pocket to come home, pay out of their pocket to split your taxes, but it's in the taxes.
Yes, please. I would, this is gonna be kind of like a big Patrick Swayze ditto on a bunch of things, but to Mr. Hamilton's point on facts, which I appreciate, I think we also need to have, really like put it out there, that we need to have a really strong, a really serious conversation on the fact that the transfer station is on an enterprise fund. It's going to get to a point where an enterprise fund needs to be structured like an enterprise fund. And a lot of those services are going to be backed on the people that actually use that fund. So it's gonna get to a point where the transfer station is not going to be sustainable. And I think that if we're looking at economies of scale, we have mostly, honest to God, I'm not married to my hauler. I'm married to getting rid of my trash at the end of the day. So if you're telling me I'm gonna save money, then that's what I'm married to, and also making my wife happy. And so I think that that's what it comes down to at the end of the day. What is in the best interest of the pockets of the town? Take away how many you need to take away.
All right, yes, Mr. Reese, please.
So I believe people should have a choice, and they have one right now. In the grand schemes of things, if you're paying $600, $800 per year to get rid of trash removal in your building cycle at home, that's high-cheap money, you know? It's not a lot of dough. But anyways, we all try to save as much as possible. I use a transfer station. I take pride in recycling, and I think a lot of other people that use it also do the same thing. We like to recycle our yard waste, and we take care of the numbers for all of Portsmouth, thus our people at the transfer station. My only concern is that they're not doing the maintenance there that's involved to keep the place running. And it is running as an enterprise fund. We're paying for it now. It works by itself. Curbside should do the same.
Thank you. All right, good? We're gonna move to, we're gonna move to a new question. This is number five. We are going to begin. Mr. Hamilton, it starts with you. Do you think the town is getting a good deal from church community housing regarding the senior center that will be built as part of the new senior housing complex at that site?
Yes.
We'd like to expand.
Sure. So the senior center is an independent organization, not run underneath the auspices of the town. The town does support it with amazing $84,000 a year. They are the home separate 501(c)(3). Five years ago, when this, four to five years ago, when this started, the senior center, which is housed in the Aunt Hutchinson Building, excuse me, was deemed to be unsafe. They were put down into a very small area. The town has worked with church community housing to provide much-needed lower moderate income housing for senior residents, which are 55 and older, which I am currently on now. And also with the senior center. The senior center, the senior center staff will have the exact same facilities, actually better facilities, same areas, bigger areas, more facilities of thrift shop, dining areas, fitness center, libraries, and other rooms that they can utilize for the betterment of the seniors around them.
Ms. McDonald, same question.
I hope, Mr. Hamilton, that everything you said is going to go as planned because if it is, then we're in luck. But I want to just speak to the process of where we came from with the senior center. And I've gone to town council meetings and talked about this. The perception by seniors was that they were going to get a new facility. The perception was that, the discussions were that, the ballot question was supposed to be that, and it changed somehow. And I take exception to that because if that can happen in the beginning of the process, what's to say other things are gonna happen as the process continues? And you know what? A new facility is not shared space. They're going to have the office, and I just hope when it comes time to the lease agreement that the seniors are very much a part of making that agreement, and they don't lose anything in the process of what they were promised. Dr. Ryan?
Again, I, alluding to our very competent town administrator, an engineering study was conducted a number of years ago. The town owns a number of buildings, many of which are not habitable or usable. The Aunt Hutchinson School was one of them enacted, but houses our senior center. Part of it is condemned. It doesn't have fire sprinklers safely installed. It has mold. So our choices were to float a 12 or higher million-dollar bond to fix it ourselves, we could all pay for it, or we had our very competent administrator contact Church Community Properties to actually construct what, if you see the illustrations, is a beautiful new building with senior housing attached to it, and the town saves a huge amount of money. This is a project that had to be done, and thanks to the diligence of our town administration, it's being done at an extremely affordable cost for the town. I view this as nothing but a win-win. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. It was wild cards. Mr. Lebec, please jump in.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pickering, you're doing a wonderful job, but I wish we had some fact checkers here. But you wanna know about the senior center project? Mr. Sebby wrote a letter that's in today's Portsmouth Times, excuse me. Read it. It's everything, and we didn't mislead anybody, and nothing is happening. And for the most part, other than some people trying to make problems at the senior center, the seniors are thrilled.
Mr. Fiorello?
I might as well chime in. 2019, a report was put out that the senior center was basically gonna be shut down because it was so badly underfunded. There was fire issues, there's mold, there's asbestos, there's lead, whatever. This is not gonna cost the taxpayers anything. Church community is footing the bill for a brand-new senior center. I agree with one thing that I think that we, as a town and town council, needs to do a better job of holding church community to the agreement and not altering anything. But I think capable people on the council will make sure that they adhere to their contracts. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move to a new question just to help you keep pace. We're through half the questions. That's five out of 10. Most of you still have at least half of your wild cards left. Some of you have four. So you're pacing yourselves very well. Next question, number six, starts with Ms. Patton. Do you have any opinions or suggestions for what the town should do with the empty and vacant Cottrell School property in the south end of town?
So, being on Park and Rec Department committees, we have talked about, you know, community centers. We visited the building. Right now, I'm really not sure where it's gonna go. There's a lot of work that needs to be done there. It's gonna cost a lot of money to the town. I'm just hoping that we're able to utilize it and come up with a plan that will benefit our community, whether it's our seniors or our youth.
Mr. Please.
Thank you. That school has been vacant for some time, but Penfield School occupied it at one time, and the Christian Academy, not so long ago as well, we used to make money on it. The south wing is the oldest, and it's at the point where it probably needs to be torn down. But if we wanted to do something at all, we could do something in the north side of the building, but it would require remediation efforts and things of that nature. The problem is, with our budget so tight, at the end of the budget cycle, we don't have any discretionary spending money left over. And there's just no way the town can fund these types of projects. We have projects that date back to 2007 that we told people we were gonna do, and we still haven't done them yet. We're always gonna be short money in this town, even though we are an affluent town. It's just the way things are structured, and the cap at 4%. So I'd love to see something there, but I don't know how we're gonna get there, you know? And one way is to do some of the work ourselves. If it needs to be torn down, can we do that with our DPW? I'm not sure, but we could consider it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Paylor?
I think it should be a community center. I think that local community organizations would probably love to be able to have a space in the community that they know that they could run to if, let's say, for instance, something falls through with your scheduling. I also think that, especially having been the chair of the food bank, the food bank has outgrown the space that it's currently in at the launch. Having that as a center of community or having a community center that you know that it's housed in is there. How do we do it? I think we should bond it out. We bombed out the infrastructure of our schools. We've done that in order to make improvements. I think that building a community center that we do bond out is something that we should do, and it's worthwhile, and it's an investment in our town.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton, this is a wild card.
Thank you. As one of the only people, I believe, in this room that actually graduated from Cottrell, in the last graduating class, second to the, one, two, three. Unfortunately, Cottrell needs to be torn down. Cottrell and the space that it is on should be created into a full Little League complex. We lost a Little League field at the senior center because of the size of the field, I'll take two. And because of the size of the seating system that we put in, we lost one because of the new Turnpike playground, which is beautiful. So as a parent and younger parents here who have to chase around all of Portsmouth to bring Johnny to this field and Suzie to that field, having a complex all in one would make everybody's life easier. So level it, change your parking around, put another ball field in.
Yes, Mr. Fiorello?
As the chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, we've talked about this so many times. I also had to sit and listen to Duncan Ingram's wild plan that he thought he had. In 2019, again, it was also in that report that it was mold, mildew, you know, lead, asbestos. It needs to come down. I agree with Keith Hamilton. Building a community center there would be great. Unfortunately, I think the size of a building that we would need, it wouldn't fit with the parking that's there with the baseball fields. I would second Keith in saying that. Level it and add another baseball field and make that a baseball, almost like a hub for Portsmouth. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Question number seven begins with Mr. Fiorello. The AARP network of age-friendly communities identifies key features of these communities as safe walkable streets, better housing and transportation options, access to key services, and opportunities for residents to participate in community activities. How would you support Portsmouth in becoming more age-friendly?
As the chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, we talk about this extensively over the five-plus years I've been there. Safety, number one, as we've talked about, about East Main Road would be curbs and road safety. We've tried to work with Chris Baker for Bike Newport to try and find avenues of bike lanes, but obviously, East Main Road is pretty much, you know, you can't have a bike in East Main Road. You take it with you in your hand. We've also worked with Quidditch Island Land Trust to try and work out new pathways for walking paths. And I think working with them a little bit closely to find different walking paths throughout Glenn, trying to map out a way to get from one point of Portsmouth to the other point of Portsmouth would be ideal. And I think working with Bike Newport and the Quidditch Island Land Trust, I think we could find a way to get seniors and young kids safely across Portsmouth without endangering themselves on East Main and West Main Road.
Thank you. Mr. Lebec?
Thank you. We actually have taken a relatively small step with the modified vehicles that are now allowed on the main roads. Basically, they are vehicles that can be used by anyone, but I think primarily they're attracted to elderly. I would support, quite frankly, changing our building code specifically to make sure that all buildings are handicap accessible, even private residences, and perhaps give a tax credit to people if they're retrofitting an existing house in order to make it handicap ready. The population is getting over, not necessarily in Portsmouth, but if we do not take account of the fact that we need to have facilities accessible to them, it's just not right, and we have to make sure they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blake, same question.
Thank you. Safety is absolutely a priority for me, so supporting our seniors is critical. Getting around in Portsmouth is difficult, and we need to help support making that more accessible to seniors and to our young students, keeping in mind, keeping it safe. What I strive to do is to not have the answer to every question. I want to work together with the community and hear from everyone. What is the different ideas? Hear of what could be some solutions and work together in a collaborative manner with both other town council members as well as the public to collaboratively solve this issue because it is important.
Okay, anyone else? All right, next question, Mr. Reese, if you can. Just to be clear, I didn't read all these questions. Yeah, it was collaboration, and they were submitted. And I'm just saying, because this isn't one I have written because I'm not a Portsmouth resident. Mr. Reese, some residents wonder what the best type of communication is to ask questions or make comments in reference to town issues. In the past, many councilors would respond through email, but that hasn't been the case the last couple of years. Some residents would like to see more councilors on social media. As a town councillor, what type of communication are you willing to?
Well, for one thing, I would speak with the constituents and be available for any verbal discussions. I like doing things one-on-one. I'm not a social media person. I think the biggest thing about the town council making decisions, we do need transparency for the public, and I think, for example, all the backup data for the agenda should be posted well ahead of time, not just three days. There are times when the council receives their information on Friday, they get a hundred-page report they gotta read and then vote on it. There's just not enough time to process it. The website needs work. They may be able to get some information from that because even I found it difficult to locate and access information that should be readily available. Like I said, I would set apart lots of time to actually want to be in a public space.
Mr. Hamilton, same question.
Well, I prefer any type of communication. I answer emails. I am on the internet. I contribute to the Facebook group. I have a cell phone, and I have two phone numbers. One's for work, so don't call me on that one. I have a cell phone. My cell phone number's on the website. Anybody can call me anytime. I appreciate talking with people. Email is a little bit different because when somebody emails the entire council, people have to be careful not to reply to all unless there's long quorum issues. So when you're expecting an answer, you'll probably get individual answers. Don't expect a blanket answer from the entire council. But the website actually was upgraded last week. It's a little bit better. But we get what we pay for. We don't spend a lot of money on the website. But people can reach out to me anyway. They have, they do, and I answer anything. They have, they do, and I answer anything I can answer.
Ms. McDonald, same question.
Communication, yes. Communication is all part of transparency, I believe, and, and it's very important to always be open. One of the definitions of transparency is being open to public scrutiny, being open and honest, providing easily accessible information. I think we have to use every avenue possible to provide information to our constituency. And I, I think it's been brought up about a communication director. I think what we need instead is, I, I am going to be willing to meet, Mr. Reese says once a week, he's very ambitious. I would meet once a month, uh, hopefully in Town Hall, given the space, uh, to hear citizens' concerns. I would use, better use of our written word, our newspapers, all, all that are available. At the end of, of each town council meeting, we did this in the last town I was in, we had a comment section where we provided five individuals the opportunity to go up and make comments, open comments. There wasn't a lot of, um, response from the council, but they at least heard what was on the minds of the council. I'm going to use some more of my time, okay? Um, and then I think the agendas have to be posted online much earlier, as, as someone pointed out as well, and I do think we have to invest more time in social media. And while I know that the, uh, town website has been, um, updated, it still needs a lot of work, I think.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Payo, first wild card question.
Yeah, I'll just take as many wild cards as you need. Uh, as probably the, well, obviously, the youngest member of the town council, but probably the youngest person here. Um, I, I communicate via social media as much as I can. Uh, I know that the parents of the town, uh, use it as a resource, uh, and trying to get in touch with me is fairly easy. Is it the, am I the fastest? No, but we all have lives. Uh, I'll, I'll take multiple wild cards on this one. Uh, but I think that, uh, a point that was made and something that we've actually did at the school committee was, we got feedback from parents saying that they were not aware of what's, what was happening at school committee meetings, uh, that they weren't transparent, although the information is there. So, what we instructed the superintendent to do was, a day immediately after the school committee meeting, parents and whomever else wants to get a digest of what, what happened, including the agenda and the video recording. Everything is there, it's just a matter of looking for it. And if we, as a town, can make things a little bit easier for our residents to be able to find this information, I think we should take the extra step in order to be able to do it.
Thank you. I could, I could repeat too. Yeah, Mr. Fiorillo, please.
If I'm so fortunate to be on the council, uh, I think I would be one of the younger people myself, but, uh,
I'll be second, yeah.
I think the town can be a little bit better with transparency, with, uh, with, with getting agenda items out, but I do understand that there are constraints with certain contracts and stuff that goes on. Uh, the website is new and it is much better. It was an enigma before, and that was something that at Parks and Rec, we talked with Wendy Bopp all the time to, uh, see if she can put the word into administration to get a new website. They do have a web new, uh, web administrator. Uh, sending out a town-wide email would be great, uh, newsletter, a town-wide newsletter after agenda meetings would be, also be great, but it takes two to tango. People actually have to look for the information. There's a lot of people that, when I go around knocking on doors and I talk to them, they say, "I don't know what's going on." And I say, "Well, we sent letters in the mail. I'm here talking to you. Uh, we, we post on social media." And they say, "Well, I don't have social media," and I throw all my junk mail out in the mail. So, it does take two to tango. Uh, and as far as transparency, I find that funny because there's a nonpartisan group in this town that, that has events and doesn't include any other Democrats. So, as far as transparency, it's kind of a, it, it takes two to tango. If you want to be transparency, be transparency across the block. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Levett.
Um, thank you very much. Couple of things. One, and I'm not recommending anybody do this, all of the council meetings are up on YouTube, and you can watch it. Again, I ain't recommending you do it, but it's available. We have had a lot of people talk about the communication. I do believe Portsmouth does a great job. I'm going to take a few minutes there. But the other thing is, I've joined something called All Things Portsmouth, and the virtue of it is that I am told on a very frequent basis that I don't listen, even though I'm responding to their comments, and that, um, that I don't listen, oh, and that I'm an idiot. Okay. Well, they don't say idiot, they say stronger terms. Um, so, the thing about it is, is that it is kind of frustrating to try to talk to folks who, quite frankly, aren't prepared to listen. And there are many things I've heard tonight that I find very frustrating. Uh, for instance, the agendas are closed because there's a last second that you can file something for the next meeting. That's by law. And then, as soon as it's done, we put out that agenda. We have access to all of the, uh, materials that the council will have, and yet, we're in ongoing business, so we meet every two weeks. So, it's not going to be that we can give you a month notice.
What did you recall then? Yeah. I think it was the,
Oh, no, I was real quick. Come on, don't you retake my wild card.
Uh, yes, Ms. White, please.
Um, communication is paramount to me. This is what the town needs, is clear communication, transparency. I want to have walk and talks, weekly get-togethers, and also, as Keith had said, have my cellphone number available. One of my strengths is the ability to work through difficult problems with people who have a difference of opinions and come to collaboration. I feel the state of Rhode Island, I'll say two, um, I think I'm out of them, um, had used the fact that the town council was kind of working against each other, um, to their advantage. If we work collaboratively, if we have communication and transparency, both between town council and the community, we will have a better result.
Mr. Levett, same question, please.
The way I interpret your question is how, how to approve communication for people that want to speak to the council, center of somebody in the town. So, I do receive emails. I don't get too many phone calls, but all that information is on the website, and it's simple for people that aren't into social media like myself, call the town clerk's office, six eight three two one oh one. They'll forward you to different departments. They can get you each individual council's phone number and email. As simple as that. I also endorse calling the Portsmouth Police Department if you see things that are going around our own town that should be investigated. Push zero when you get to the prompt, uh, six eight three oh three hundred, and they'll take care of you as well. So, I, I think we have some ways. There's definitely room for improvement, but, uh, if we could just get that across to people to make it as simple as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Removed your new question, starting with Dr. Ryan. So, this question's actually under the same draw, I hope we were just talking about. Not entirely, but some of you wander into this area already. A story, uh, in the local newspaper earlier this year dealt into the question of whether the Portsmouth Town Council has a PR problem and whether the body's actions, decisions, and background information are accurately communicated with the public. Do you think the town council and the government in general has a PR problem in Portsmouth? And if so, what should be done about it?
If there's a public relations problem, then it may have to do with how governance of the town is perceived. The, as has been pointed out multiple times, the proceedings of the town council are recorded on the town website. You can look them up if you are actually interested in watching the, uh, transactions as they go on. The videos are posted to YouTube. There, with any, it's like the game of telephone, with any large group of people, if one person says one thing, another person repeats it to a third person, and eventually, you start to get things that are perceived to have been said, that may or may not have been said or intended the way they're being recorded. So, I think the best way for the PR problem, if there is one to be resolved, is for everybody to consult the same sources of information, the town website, consult the town, the meeting, the minutes of the town meeting, and watch the videos. Thanks.
Ms. Patton, same question.
Sure. So, I do believe there is a PR problem to a certain extent. Um, over time, I know myself have had difficulties finding agendas or minutes for different, um, committees and things in town. With the new website, I hope that, you know, we can all work together to get things out there, um, with more openness and transparency to help the residents find the information that they need.
Mr. Gleason, same question.
Thank you. This is a tough one for me. I, I don't really understand the, this whole concept that there's a PR problem. Um, I know we have a website problem, you know? We're up to, we as councils have to reuse that as a tool to try and search for previous agendas, to look for background information, and oftentimes, the obvious does not come up when you search it. And it's just been revamped, so I was disappointed in that we've gone through the motions. And it's a company called Civic Plus. I don't recommend them to anybody, but that's my own personal opinion. But, um, you know, I think we, we as a council don't always project the best interest. Are we fun-loving people to work, work together on every subject? Probably not, but we, you know, I know I'm doing the best I can for you folks, and, uh, I think others probably fall in that category as well. Our beliefs are different. But I, I don't know if I answered that question, but just a couple of thoughts on that. Thank you.
Anyone else to jump in on this? All right. Removed your new question. Um, this is the true wild card question tonight. It is the final one. Mr. Payo, we're starting with you.
I'm scared.
Is there anything you'd like to talk about that we have not talked about yet tonight?
Dave, you want to go first? Uh, I, I, I would say the one thing that actually came up last, uh, two years ago, when we were in our little echo chamber of a forum, uh, that didn't come up this year, and I, and I, it's not really a question, it's more of a where we are now, where the schools, uh, and what we have done with the schools and what it is. The fact that we have not addressed the schools and the improvements that we have done and basically the work that the school department has gone through, especially getting our children out of COVID, uh, restrictions and any type of educational lag, is testament to the awesome work that our school department has done. Uh, so, although that was my life for six years, uh, I think the fact that we're not discussing it tonight is testament to the fact of the awesome work and the awesome schools that Portsmouth has and how it's known around the entire state.
Mr. Fiorillo, same question.
All right. Um, pickleball.